Hello and welcome to the Cypress City Council Candidates Forum for 2020. Brought to you by the Cypress Chamber of Commerce. My name is Tim Keenan and I serve on the Board of Directors of the Cypress Chamber. I'm also a former city council member and served two of those years as mayor of the city of Cypress. The Cypress Chamber has managed to stay active during this challenging year. While our live in-person major events like the Student Business Breakfast, the annual Business Awards have been put on hold. The one event we are still hosting is our monthly networking breakfast. Our once a month networking breakfast now held on Zoom is always on the second Tuesday of the month. Please check out cypresschamber.org for our links to that Zoom event. Our special guests on October 13th will be Cypress Mayor Rob Johnson and City Manager Peter Grant, who will share important background information on the city-sponsored Measure P on the November ballot, with some suggested changes to the city charter. Also, because our forum is virtual this year, we've created something new and we've added an opportunity to safely meet the Cypress City Council candidates live in person. The Cypress Chamber of Commerce will host a meet and greet at Oak Knoll Park, 5700 Orange Avenue, this coming Saturday, October 3rd, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. In a socially distant setting, voters will move around to widely separated stations and meet each participating candidate, gather literature, ask important questions, and be able to mingle a little bit with the candidates. Each station will be spaced widely apart and social distance will be managed. And we ask that you please wear your face masks. All right, now we're ready to start our forum. If I could ask the candidates to join me. For well over three decades, the Cypress Chamber has hosted the Election Cycle Candidates Forum for the City Council. And it was always a live event that was sometimes videotaped and sometimes aired on cable. And we all know that 2020 has thrown us a bunch of curveballs. So this year, you're seeing a virtual event that is streaming on Facebook Live and will also air at a later date on YouTube and will be available for viewing until the November 3rd election. We have nine candidates this year for two open seats that are being vacated by outgoing council members, Mayor Rob Johnson and Mayor Pro Tem Mary Ellen Yarke. Our candidates for 2020 are Blaze Benz, you're welcome to wave when I introduce you, Jimmy Fuller, David Gersten, Keri Kotsumata Hayashida, Anne Hertz, Francis Marquez, Steve Moss, Rachel Strong, and Cole Thompson. Just so that you know, events like this cannot happen without the help of some sponsors. And this year, the Chamber of Commerce would like to thank our signature sponsor for the year, SoCal Gas. SoCal Gas and the Semper Energy family of companies want to do everything they can to support our community during this time, especially those who are most vulnerable. Since March 17th, SoCal Gas has donated more than $2.9 million to nonprofit organizations throughout their service area to support the region's workforce, feed the hungry, provide bill assistance to customers most affected by COVID-19, and to assist with COVID-19 programs and services throughout their service territory. Thanks once again to SoCal Gas. Additional sponsors this year include Kinetic Mortgage, The Bertle Team Real Estate, and Creative Media Recording. We also have some in-kind assistance from the city of Cypress, as well as The Orange County Breeze and the Event News Enterprise. So if I could ask the candidates to hide their cameras, we're gonna have a little word from our sponsor SoCal Gas, and then we're going to come back and get started in the forum. All right, welcome back. So the format for the 2020 Candidates Forum is as follows. We've done a random drawing ahead of time to select the order in which each candidate will take their turn to address the audience. First, we'll have opening remarks from each candidate in their selected order. Then we'll proceed with questions submitted ahead of time by Cypress businesses and residents. And each candidate will answer each question in a lot of timeframe. We will not be asking any questions that were aimed at one specific candidate, but rather general questions for all the candidates to cover. And we'll be rotating who goes first with each question. And at the end, we'll wrap up with closing statements in the reverse order that they started with. So if you're ready, we're gonna hear a first opening statement from candidate Cole Thompson. Cole, if you'll join me on screen.
Hi, Tim. Thank you. And good evening, everybody. My name is Cole Thompson. First of all, I'd like to start off by thanking the city of Cypress Chamber of Commerce for putting on this event and all the work they put into it. And of course, all my fellow candidates for attending this evening. We have a lot of issues facing our city, but my goal is to find the best solutions while being the most transparent, ensuring that you have the trust in our city by balancing our budget, focusing on the necessities, and planning for the future. This is really our moment to improve and strengthen our community for whatever, you know, lies ahead. We must invest and support our infrastructure, law enforcement, housing, and keeping all of our citizens engaged. We have to ensure that we're not only just attracting good businesses, but that we retain them and we retain the talent that comes along with them. We have to make the proper investments now and we will climb out of this pandemic and the ensuing economic downturn that it has landed us in. I thank all of you for being here. I'm honored to be here and I look forward to tonight's forum. Thank you.
Thank you very much for doing that. Our next candidate is Rachel Strong. Rachel, if you could join me on the screen.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Tim. Good evening, Cypress voters and fellow candidates. My motivation for running for a seat on the City Council is my deep love for the city of Cypress. I wasn't born here per se, but I managed to make my way here about three days later. So I experienced a very different hometown than we know today. I ate locally grown strawberries and went to preschool on a farm that backed up to Forest Lawn. After college, I returned to Cypress to start my family and I love that it has evolved into a community that embraces both tradition and progress. As a resident, the local business owner of Strong Dance Studios and the mom of an elementary school-aged child, I share many of your concerns, things like balance and development, retaining and attracting businesses that will not negatively impact our quality of life, and supporting our community through the pandemic. As I'm meeting people while campaigning, I'm hearing voters ask for more transparency on things like the Town Center proposal, the Amazon Last Mile project, bidding for vendor contracts. I feel we can leverage technology to maintain this visibility as well as support what were formerly social events like live streaming concerts on the green, which we missed last summer. Our city is fiscally sound but will soon feel the sharp impact of COVID-19. I, for one, am not in favor of increasing taxes for existing businesses, but rather for building new opportunities for Cypress that will make it a destination while building our tax base. I have some ideas for safely innovating interaction for families, seniors, and kids. I have been successful in pivoting my business to an online virtual streaming platform as well as a hybrid system which allows people to participate safely and socially distantly. I know that our city can use this same technology and apply it to other endeavors as well. This is what our schools will be doing and they need our support more than ever. I'm running a grassroots campaign and I would credibly say that I can represent a large cross-section of residents and be your voice at City Hall. So I'm asking for you to vote for strong leadership on November 3rd. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Rachel. Our next candidate is Steve Moss. He's gonna give his opening statement. Steve, if you could join me? And if you could unmute your mic.
Very good. You'd think a technology company leader could figure out a microphone. I just wanna say I am grateful for the opportunity to come before this forum. I appreciate the efforts by the Chamber of Commerce and the city. It is an honor to be here and it's an honor to be able to run for City Council. I've enjoyed the benefits of living in Cypress for over 20 years. I raised my family here and we've enjoyed the many outdoor activities and we've enjoyed the low crime rate and high quality of life. I've also managed a successful software data migration company for more than 30 years, having moved the business here to Cypress about 10 years ago because of the great reputation that Cypress has. I am running to help continue the traditions in Cypress that will allow us to achieve even greater heights. My primary campaign themes are law and order. I fully support the police department. I am not in favor of defunding the police in any way, shape, or form. Integrity. It's so important to tell the truth and to be upfront with the citizens. We need to always maintain that standard. Fiscal responsibility and transparency. And I look forward to answering any questions tonight and hope to win your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. Our next speaker for his opening statement is Blaze Benz. Blaze, if you could join me. Great. And unmute your mic.
All right. Thank you. Tim, thank you. Chamber, thank you very much, the city of Cypress. And I really wanna thank the attendees today as well as the other candidates as well for coming out. I'm really energized by the fact that we have so many candidates and shows really the energy that we have for this city. What I'm running on is basically I want to make positive improvement and positive changes to our city that we have. We've got a small-town feel in our city. We've done very well. I think we can improve and continue on. What I stand for are three major platforms. One is I'd like to have a plan for the city. We need to have a plan for Lark, the Los Alamos Racecourse, the Lincoln Corridor, the Mitsubishi Last Mile Amazon Center, as well as a balance between bringing in businesses and also building residential places. And again, in a balanced manner. I stand for fiscal responsibility. I've always, I'm not taking any funds from anyone or any organization. I believe that that can muddle things up. I've always run my business and my home with no debt. I've run the board of Tanglewood. We have the lowest HOAs and the best amenities. I look at the budgets that we have. I think we can improve and do better and build on the services, build on police services, yet fiscally responsible. I'm strong with safety and improving. I patrol the streets, the harbors, the jails of Orange County. I understand where, build a strong service and a strong police force. I have the experience and I'd like to bring that to Cypress. Thank you.
Thank you, Blaze. Appreciate that. Our next opening statement is from Keri Kotsumata Hayashida. Keri, if you could join me on screen.
Thanks, Tim, and thank you for everybody who is tuning in tonight. My name is Keri Hayashida and this is my silver anniversary here in Cypress. I've been here for 25 years now. And I've raised three boys here. I have survived a divorce. I've lost a parent here. I said goodbye to old neighbors and welcome new neighbors. And today, I'm an empty nester and looking forward to giving back to the community that has done so much for me. I believe that there's several, there's great things about Cypress, right? And within this 6.67 mile square cozy city, we do have some challenges. I look forward to serving the city to finally move the Los Alamos Race Track in the direction that we wanted to go. I also believe that the 13-acre and 9-acre projects, we have such great opportunity to benefit the residents and the businesses. We have a safe city and I wanna see that continue even with our growth and new housing developments that we've seen and will continue to see. And, you know, we're going through the 2020 pandemic, establishing new norms, and hoping to build a better community that's stronger yet and see you back. And my time is up. So I hope to answer the rest of your questions and earn your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Keri. Our next presenter for his opening statement is Jimmy Fuller. Jimmy, if you could join me on screen. There we go.
Hi. Thank you, Tim, and thank you to the Chamber for hosting this event. As a lifelong resident of Cypress, it would be my honor to serve the residents of our great city for the next four years on the City Council. I have a foundation of public service to our community. This includes my volunteer service with the Cypress Community Festival, AYSOU Soccer, Friends of Cypress Park and Rec, and the Cypress Chamber of Commerce. My record, it speaks for itself. I am the only candidate tonight who has publicly honored veterans in Cypress. I am the only candidate who has publicly honored first responders and frontline workers during the COVID-19 pandemic. And I am the only candidate to further the betterment of our youth sports groups through services at the Cypress Community Festival. Once elected to the council, I will focus on public safety, our local economy, supporting our community, parks and recreation, and our partnership with educators, to name a few. I bring real solutions to real Cypress problems. This is why I'm endorsed by a Parks and Rec Commissioner, the 2019/2020 Cypress Teacher of the Year, and the 2019 Business of the Year in Cypress. I look forward to answering your questions posed tonight and would be happy to chat with anyone on Saturday at the in-person meet and greet about how we can make Cypress even better tomorrow than it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Appreciate that statement. Our next presenter for his opening statement is David Gersten.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and SoCal Gas and the other sponsors tonight to allow all of the great candidates to have an opportunity to share our thoughts and be available to the public to answer questions of theirs. My name is David Gersten. I'm a resident of Cypress for just over 13 years. I'm a father of two high school-aged boys, a husband of almost 20 years, and someone that represents the typical Cypress resident demographic. I'm deeply involved in community, both professionally and non-professionally. In my professional life, I provide solutions for business transformation using people, process, and technology. I ask for your support to be one of the next Cypress City Council members. I believe just like my professional world, using people, process, and technology, we can use the same to allow this great community to have its own transformation as well. My focus involves listening to the residents, the business owners, and the visitors of this beautiful city. Without being caught up with the deep vested ties to the city, I know I will do what's right for the people and not just to better myself or my business. My initiatives are citizen safety and security, youth and adolescents' programs, city beautification initiatives, enhancing community pride, business recruitment, and mental illness awareness. Thank you, and I look forward to tonight, and I ask you for your support.
Thank you, David. Our next presenter is Anne Hertz. We'll give her opening statement. Anne, if you'll join me? And unmute?
There we go. Thank you, Tim. Good evening and thank you to the Cypress Chamber of Commerce and SoCal Gas for sponsoring this event. And welcome to all tuning in for the live stream or watching the replay. And best of luck to all of the candidates as we engage in this very exciting democratic process. My name is Anne Hertz. I've been an active member of the Cypress community for 25 years. I believe that we are all responsible for making the world a better place and that's how I live my life. When I see a need, I find solutions. As a community volunteer and local nonprofit executive, I've partnered with the city, schools, businesses, and service organizations to provide opportunities for children to succeed in school and families to access the resources they need to keep their children healthy and on track to graduate high school with a plan. I have extensive experience in driving business growth, developing partnerships, and creating innovative operating models. As CEO of the Boys and Girls Club, I grew the organization by 500%, all while improving quality and completing capital improvements in buildings and parks. And I rapidly revised operations to safely open in the pandemic at existing as well as new locations. We were here to serve the community. As a City Council member, I will use my local knowledge and business experience to work with my fellow council members and staff to minimize costs and drive revenue growth without raising taxes to successfully navigate through the economic difficulty that COVID has presented to us. I'm confident we can and will do this while we maintain public safety and infrastructure, retain and attract businesses, and preserve the high quality of life that we all enjoy here in Cypress. Which challenges? Did I read it another time? Okay. Thank you, Tim.
And then our last opening statement is from candidate Francis Marquez. Francis, if you could join us on screen. And then unmute your mic. There we go.
I want to thank, Tim, Vanessa, and the entire Cypress Chamber of Commerce team who've worked so hard on our behalf to hold this important forum. I want to thank my fellow candidates for running and for being here, for cheering on the city of Cypress. In 1974, my parents bought a home in Cypress and that home rooted us in a safe community with quality public schools. Cypress provided me with a strong foundation for a successful life. I want to ensure that every community member has the same opportunity. COVID-19 altered our lives dramatically. Change is not easy. But if we come together, Cypress will persevere. As your City Council member, I will make it my top priority to keep our residents safe and protect our local economy. I will help secure relief for our seniors and small businesses, especially during this difficult time. When I worked in government, I advocated for better access to health and childcare for our veterans. I also secured funding for the Starbase Program at the Los Alamos Joint Forces Training Base, which encourages fifth-grade students to study science and math. Now I teach deaf and hard-of-hearing students and mentor them to pursue careers in public service. I'm the daughter of a Korean War veteran and our family has called Cypress home since 1974. I attended quality schools such as Dameron and Vessels Elementary, Lexington Junior High, and Cypress High School. This enabled me to earn my bachelor's degree from UCLA and a master's and doctorate from Claremont Graduate University. I will put my skills and experience to work for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Francis. Appreciate that. Okay, so we are going to move on to some questions and answers that have been submitted, as we said, by the voters, businesses, and residents. And the first question is, again, to get to know the candidates and a little bit more about your background. Some of you have answered this, but it's a kind of a two-part question. If you could tell us how long you've lived in Cypress and then what civic organizations have you actively participated in to serve your community here in Cypress as a volunteer? Not necessarily part of your employment, but as a volunteer. And at what level and how long have you served as a volunteer? So our first answer for that one is Cole Thompson. Cole, if you could join me?
And then? So for how long I've lived in Cypress? I've lived in Cypress for about four, four and a half years now. And well, four and a half good years, I'd say. For civic organizations, about four years ago, I joined the Community Emergency Response Team, which is the civilian arm of FEMA. And that was done at Joint Forces Training Base, Los Alamos, where we learned basic search and rescue procedures, fire suppression, first aid, medical treatment, that sort of thing. I did that primarily because of my neighborhood, involves my school, to be involved there. And that led me to run for school site council, where I served three terms at Cypress High School. And I served on that committee, you know, during a time of construction. So we made sure we looked at that very closely. As well as looking at our budget, making sure students had adequate access to technology, investing in technology that's always changing. And of course, it's a very important part of education, as well as curriculum and textbooks and other educational materials that were necessary. So, good question. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Cole. Rachel Strong, so if you could join me? How long have you lived in Cypress and then what civic organizations have you participated in a little more detail, maybe?
Hi, Tim. Thanks for the question. I've lived in Cypress for most of my life. I was brought home from the hospital to Cypress and I grew up going to Cypress schools. I'm 45 now and I lived away from Cypress for the duration of college and the early part of my career. So 45 minus 12, approximately 33 years in the community. In that time, I have been involved in volunteering in various levels and various activities. I have been a frequent volunteer at Vessel School, which back in the day when I attended was the Vessel Vikings. Now we have the Bulldogs. But I'm a frequent volunteer there, at least was until the pandemic for about the last four years. I have also participated with Girl Scouts of America, hosting free seminars and educational experiences for kids to be exposed to dance, ballet, and the performing arts. And I run a nonprofit in the city of Cypress in order to facilitate free or low-cost instruction for dancers to pursue either recreational or aggressive pre-professional dance training.
Great. All right. Thank you, Rachel. Our next presenter is Steve Moss. So Steve, how long have you lived in Cypress and some of the civic organizations that you've been involved in?
Great. Thanks for the question, Tim. I have lived in Cypress for about 20 years now. As I mentioned in my open, we're thrilled to be here, of course. I have participated in many civic organizations, to name a couple. I met Anne through the Boys and Girls Club. I started as a volunteer there before the pandemic. I haven't been back and I miss it. I love those kids and I really like the, not only the opportunities that the Boys and Girls Club offers for the youth, but also I always appreciated the way that Anne could light up any room. Really love her attitude and her service. I've also worked very closely with the Boy Scouts of America. I'm a former scout master and always had a passion to try to help the youth and to learn and to grow and to learn good values and to be ready to participate in society. Last but not least, I wanted to mention the Hope Food Bank and also the Citizens for Responsible Development as we fought against the Prologis Trucking Logistics Center that was about to go in. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next is Blaze Benz. So how long have you lived here and some of the civic organizations you've been involved in and volunteered your service?
Thank you, Tim. I've been in Cypress for a little over 21 years now. And my volunteer services are mostly throughout Orange County. I, in 2003, became a reserve deputy for the Orange County Sheriff's Department as a reserve. It's a complete volunteer organization, but we are fully deputized. I rose through the ranks as a lieutenant. I've served mostly in harbor patrol, but also in street patrol and also the jails. The total number of hours that I put into it accumulated to approximately $2 million that have been given back or given freely to Orange County for the taxpayers. I'm very proud of that and I'm still with the Orange County Sheriff's Department. I help run and organize the Mothers Against Drunk Driving meetings every month, as well as Make-A-Wish cruises twice a year. A couple other volunteer activities I do, I am on the Cypress Traffic Commission currently. And then I also mentor student athletes. I'm very proud of my first student athlete. He came from a disenfranchised area and he played on the San Francisco 49ers last year in the Super Bowl. I work at the SPCA LA as well with my wife to foster kittens and train dogs. And I'm a circus owner and continue to do more volunteering. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Next is Keri Hayashida.
Hello. So as a 20-year, 25-year resident, I've had the opportunity to work, to volunteer with the Walker Junior High School Site Council. I did that for a year and we helped with the re-modification of the school. I was also a deacon for three years at my church in Santa Ana. And I was a volunteer parent for my kids as they went to elementary school at Luther, elementary, Walker Junior High School, and also at Kennedy High School. And they were all in band and we have a great program here in Cypress. And I'm very proud to say that I was band chaperone and parent, room parent, as well. as well as the Kennedy High School VP of Hospitality for the Shamrock Regiment. And did that for a year. And I was at the, at Hope International University, I coordinated a study abroad program for students. And I've done fundraising just on my own for the Santa Barbara wildfires in twenty nineteen, for the current ongoing wildfires of twenty twenty. And then we also have donated a lot of frontline support kits to hospitals and care workers during COVID.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, next is Jimmy Fuller.
Thanks, Tim. I lived in Cypress for twenty-five plus years, and my service organizations include the Cypress Community Festival Association, where I'm currently the sponsorship coordinator, chairperson. Also, AYSO U-Soccer, did that for many, many years. Friends of Cypress, Parks and Rec, and also the Cypress Chamber. And throughout serving on these organizations, it's allowed me to do some really great things for our community, including, of course, organizing and putting on the Cypress Community Festival, which is just an avenue for other nonprofit groups to raise money, including all youth sports groups in Cypress and the Chamber and Kiwanis. Most recently, it allowed me to put up, I'm sure most residents have seen them, the giant banners that hang along Cerritos and all of the schools, really thanking all of the frontline healthcare workers and first responders during COVID nineteen. We were able to put up over a hundred and forty names, and we were able to do that at zero dollars to the Cypress taxpayers. While serving on AYSO, we were able to thank our veterans during our annual Memorial Day tournament, and we were able to thank over a hundred and twenty veterans during those years.
Thank you, Jimmy. Next is David Gersten. David?
Hi, Tim. Thanks for the question. I've been a longtime resident of Cypress for a mere thirteen years. So it sounds new to the previous candidates. As well as my civic organization participation in the city of Cypress has been a little bit limited. During these last thirteen years, I've been an incredibly present father, co-parenting my, both of my school-aged children. They've been the number one priority to me during their years, getting up into their high school days now. Participating in school activities, obviously, very involved in those school decisions that were made, things like that at the school, dealing with mental illness issues at the school programs and depression and things like that. Prior to coming into the Cypress community, though, I did participate for about six years volunteering with both the Gardena and Los Angeles Police Department, as well as in my, a branch of my professional life, but not really professional, is my Voices for Innovation participation currently, working with senators and Congress to bring digital bandwidth to areas throughout the world that don't have capabilities. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, David. Moving on to Anne Hertz. Anne, if you could join me? All right.
Oh, there we go. Thank you so much for this question. You're speaking my language. First of all, I want to acknowledge all the volunteering that the fellow candidates have done. I feel like we're in really good company. A lot of people engaged in the community. When I moved here twenty-five years ago, my oldest child was just about to enter kindergarten. And I went into that first, you know, parent meeting, wanting to volunteer, and I started out in the classroom. That was the start of twelve years of very strong leadership in our local PTAs. Three as PTA president at Landell, two as council PTA president, which is really our school district. And then I was very involved at the county level. And as part of the county, I put together a partnership with the Orange County PTAs and several social service organizations. We got an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from First Five and gave information out to underserved populations throughout the county. About eighty thousand, about eighty thousand people were served as a result of that.
Thank you. That's your sixty seconds.
That was my sixty seconds. I have lots more to say, but I'll do them in closing.
Next is Francis Marquez. Great.
Yes, I was raised here in Cypress, and I went away to college and came back. So it's a total of about seventeen, eighteen years there. I, as a young person here in Cypress, I was immediately drawn to public service. I helped coach Pop Warner Football Cheerleaders, who used to have Cypress Pop Warner Football, and also participated in student government at Cypress High School. I founded an organization called the S Club. It was a sister club to the Cypress Seroptimist Club. And at that time, we worked closely with the Special Olympics, so we helped sponsor the event. And we also worked with women who face domestic violence. We sponsored a home and brought different products and things to the women to support them. So those are just some of my activities at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So our next question, the first one that's going to go is Rachel Strong. And for the past thirty-five years, the Cypress City Council has been physically prudent in managing the city's resources. Our city council has a tradition of resisting calls to add a utility tax or citywide sales tax, unlike other Orange County cities and some of the cities that are around us. So if you could please share your opinion about increasing taxes and fees in general, in particular, a utility tax or a citywide sales tax addition?
Thank you for that really important question. I would like to be loud and clear that I'm not in favor of new taxes or fees, including utilities or used taxes. I think there are plenty of innovative ways to bring tax revenue into the city that don't involve imposing levies or fees on businesses that may already be struggling to get through COVID nineteen. I think right now is a really important time to focus on shoring up those businesses, which our city and city council have done a fantastic job of doing. I was super encouraged to see that there was so much relief provided to our local small businesses in the form of grants that were made available, as well as fast approval process for different permits and things for outdoor eating and dining to help our restaurants stay in business. So I think as a community, we've been extremely responsive in the current pandemic situation to assisting our small businesses. And we need to maintain the tide of that by not imposing or levying any new taxes or fees. As far as bringing in that kind of revenue to the city, I think we can rely on seducing new business opportunities in and build it in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Our next is Steve Moss. So utility tax or citywide sales tax or taxes and fees in general?
Got it. Thank you, Tim. I just want to go on record, just as Rachel did, that I am completely against any additional fees or taxes on the residents, utility or otherwise. I think we, the city of Cypress, has sufficient funds to carry out the very important work of the city government, and they have done a very good job so far, and I would like to see that continue. One of the best ways to drive business out, especially at this point in time, where so many small businesses are struggling, would be to raise taxes and fees and make it more expensive for them to function in this area. We need to be helping them, not pushing them away. There are measures at the state level as well that we have to be very careful of that would raise fees on businesses to the point where you're either left to close their doors or to pass those fees on to others, and we don't want to be in that position.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Blaze Benz is next.
Hi, Tim. All right. Utilities, hi, utility fees as well as taxes. I agree with Rachel and Steve. To some extent, I believe that utility taxes or utility fees should absolutely not be increased at all. It is not what we need for business. It's not what we need for the citizens of Cypress. When it comes to taxes, sales tax specifically, I have a slightly different thought process in that. Currently, in the next election, Los Alamitos is going to propose raising their sales tax by one and a half percent. That'll take it to nine-point-two-five percent for sales tax. If you look at Long Beach, just our sister city, they're at ten-point-two-five percent sales tax. I think right now we have an amazing opportunity to look at possibly lowering our sales tax. Imagine if we, and I've asked this for the city council, to do a study, if we could lower our sales tax by a half percent or possibly even a percent, we would draw in more businesses here. We would draw in people doing business here in the city of Cypress. To a great extent, bringing in more revenues, yet reducing taxes for all the citizens and the businesses here in Cypress. I think we can have a win-win here if we do it right.
All right. Next is Carrie Hayashida.
There we go. Sorry for the lag. I, okay, so I completely agree with the other candidates about not increasing taxes and fees. I mean, we see the utilities asking for increased fees almost annually. And then there was the gas, the big gas tax hike last year. And we are struggling through COVID. We just don't need more. So I do agree that we can get innovative, and we should look at partnerships. I agree with Blaze on possibly considering the lowering of sales tax. And with all the development opportunities ahead of us, we can look to bring new businesses here. And we just need to do that. And I think that we can do it without increasing fees and taxes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Jimmy Fuller is next. Same question.
Yep. I'll definitely go on the record like the other candidates and say that I am a hundred percent against any raising in taxes and fees and utility taxes, et cetera. I think that the way Cypress can sustain economic, good economic times, especially during COVID, is we need to attract new businesses into Cypress. Something that is on my platform is a sort of economic task force, where nobody cares more about the city, or should care more about the city than the city council themselves out of staff and members at city government. And so we need to get our city council members a little bit more involved in terms of partnering with existing businesses or potentially new businesses and landlords. And if it's an hour lunch or so, once or twice a month, sit down, meet, and find out what really matters to these businesses, small and large, everything from Subs and Grubs to United Healthcare, to figure out how do we attract new businesses, you know, what are businesses looking for that maybe Cypress doesn't offer? And use those meetings for the city council to set strategic initiatives to attract and retain business. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Next is David Gersten.
All right. Thank you. Good question. I guess the benefit of being halfway through the candidates is you could obviously agree with a lot of what everyone's saying. I will also go on the record of saying that I am completely against any new taxes, any new utility fees, used taxes, sales taxes, et cetera. I think the candidates have spoken of some great ideals. I do believe we do need friendly ways to support, retain, and attract new businesses. I love the idea of the lower sales tax. I think that could be a great reason of shopping in one city versus going across the border and going to a next. I know I do that personally right now, avoiding certain areas because of sales taxes. I also think we have a responsibility strengthened our fiscal responsibility as a city, looking at pensions, looking at staffing, looking at ways of bringing in technology to possibly do things a bit more efficiently and a bit more smartly, which will overcome, reduce some of our costs. I love the idea of strategic partnerships, whether or not it's with other agencies, but specifically with our businesses and our residents throughout the town, throughout the city. They need to be listened to, and we do need to take action based on their responses.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next response is from Anne Hertz. Anne, you need to unmute. Sorry, sorry. Start over. That's okay. Two buttons.
There we go. Thank you. I am completely opposed to any increase in taxes or in fees. It's critical that we continue to remain a business-friendly city so that we can continue to recruit and retain and expand the businesses that we have. The suggestion to reduce the sales tax, although I think motivated from a really good place, I believe is not able to be implemented. The tax base rate, the lowest tax rate base rate possible is seven and three-quarter percent, which I think is where we're at. If I'm wrong, you know, it'd be something to discuss further, but I think we're at the lowest that we can be. Thank you.
Thank you. And our, and the next one is Francis Marquez. All right, Francis, thank you.
I just, I think we need to evaluate our revenue streams and look at those revenue generating activities that bring in funding. We need to provide, first of all, I'm also against any new taxes, especially during this difficult time. It just, that can't happen. We often provide tax breaks to corporations coming into the city. And I think, you know, there's a balance there, and because many times the residents pay those taxes, it falls on them. So we need to look at that balance. And we also need to ensure that every entity using our roads, our parks, and any public safety pays their fair share. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Cole Thompson is the last answer for that.
All right. Thank you. You know, I think the key thing that we have to look at when it comes to revenue and taxation is balancing the budget, cutting out the fluff. You know, just get the pork out of there. That's going to be the first kind of goal. And the city does pretty well. I mean, we're pretty fiscally balanced. I don't think a utility tax is the right way to go, because that only affects small businesses and families. And that's the thing we need to be supporting right now. But I'm not going to be, you know, like George H.W. Bush and paint myself into a corner and say no new taxes. We don't know where we're going to be at. City of Cypress and State of California, United States of America is officially in a recession. And we have to, you know, be aware of that. And there may come a time where we have to balance the budget so that we don't run ourselves into debt, and we have to pay for essential services. So that's just may what happen. Just to be honest with you, and you know, that's just what could happen. But we have to take care of our city first. That's going to be the priority.
All right. Thank you. So that's everyone's had a chance to answer the questions. We're going to start our next one. The first respondent is going to be Steve Moss. The question is, and we've received several questions on this next topic. So many residents are concerned about high-density projects here in Cypress. And the supermajority legislators in Sacramento have forced cities to allow high-density development with no parking restrictions. Additional dwelling units on single-family lots are now also allowed by Sacramento to be built in residential neighborhoods, and Cypress can do little to stop this. So will you, as a council member, commit to fight the urbanization of Cypress in order to keep our community safe from overbuilding and having a problem with parking issues and density? It's going to be a team effort to be able to do that. So Steve Moss is our first answer on this. Steve, if you can.
All right. Thank you. That's a great question, and it's one that's near and dear to my heart. I have to tell you that I'm really disappointed with Sacramento and their efforts to force high-density housing into our neighborhoods. The proposals that have been put forward to allow the raising of single-family homes and replacing them with high-density apartment buildings everywhere is just unconscionable. I can't even believe that Sacramento is trying to take over the zoning authorities from the local municipalities. As a member of city council, I can commit to you that I will do everything that I possibly can to fight against that happening. This is not acceptable for the city of Cypress. And I don't believe that there's little that we can do. I think with organizing and creating allegiances with other smaller cities, we can have a voice in Sacramento as well. It's not enough to simply vote. We have to get out there and mobilize and make sure this doesn't happen in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Blaze? You have that question? You know what we're talking about? All right.
Thanks, Tim. And I agree with Steve to an extent. We do need to push back on Sacramento. They cannot just ramrod agenda down our throats like high-density housing everywhere. But we can do a good balance. What we have right now is not a good balance. We just put a two-hundred-and-fifty-one-unit apartment complex. We approved it, I should say, at Lark, right off Cotella and the Los Alamos Racecourse. I don't think that's the appropriate place for the traffic and the parking that's going to be needed for that. I look at the Lincoln Corridor. It's kind of a hot mess right now. We don't have a plan for it. We wanted to build that as a walking community, one where you would have more higher-density housing. So you have two- or three-story houses or complexes with the first floor being retail. Starbucks and dry cleaning, and you have a grocery store down the block, and then you have a Starbucks and dry cleaning, and you have a grocery store down the block and then you have a movie theater down the block from there. So you can get all your entertainment, your grocery shopping and then go and walk back home and be a safe community. We might be able to do high-density housing in some areas like Lincoln Corridor, but overall, the city does not need high-density housing and we do not want to put it where it is already being approved like in Lark.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Next is Kerry Hayashida. Kerry?
Okay, hello. I completely agree with the need to join with other cities to fight back against Sacramento. I do not like all of the high-density housing on Lincoln as well. And believe that if the overlay is going to stay intact, then we need to redesign the next several projects that will be built there. We have also the Los Alamos Racetrack. They want to build homes there. And I hope that we can work together to finally come up with a good plan on design that does not include density housing. And we just, we need that balance. We don't have enough water. We don't have enough natural gas. We are constantly hearing about rolling blackouts. Those are the things that we need to consider when we are looking at building more homes. And we need the balance, not only for that, but also for traffic. Thanks.
Thank you, Kerry. Next is Jimmy Fuller.
Tim, can you say the question one more time for me?
Yes, absolutely. So residents are concerned about high-density projects here in, in Cyprus. Additional dwelling units are sort of being imposed on residential areas or people could build a granny house in the back, that kind of thing. And the city sort of doesn't have control over that because it's being mandated by Sacramento. And also density and parking issues are sort of being, the, the city council is being overridden by that. And we're wondering what your feeling is about this urbanization, potential urbanization of Cyprus and how you'd push back.
Okay, thank you. Gotcha. I mean, overall, I've been on the record at former city council meetings, I am primarily in favor of single-family housing developments in Cyprus. I happen to live over towards Denny and Lincoln and I can tell you the traffic on Lincoln is pretty bad at certain times of the day. The Lincoln specific plan does call out for a mix of residential and retail there. So I know a lot of high-density housing has been built that is primarily residential. So the, the next city council really needs to focus on making sure that future projects, if approved on Lincoln for housing, do include some sort of retail component, as other candidates have elaborated to a walking-type community. And then in terms of Sacramento, I don't think most Cyprus residents realize they want us to plan for over 3,000 new housing developments in the city for the next eight years. And we do need to push back against them with our surrounding cities because, I mean, most residents will agree to, other than the Los Alamos Racetrack, there's really nowhere else to build those units unless we're building very high-density housing and taking up other existing uses. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Next is David Gersten.
Hi, thank you.
You understand the question?
Thank you. No, I'm good with the question. I appreciate it. I am actually not in favor of high-density developments of all single-family residence. And retail does need to be a focus to bring in and support our residents in a more urban lifestyle experience. It's funny, Jimmy, you took the words right out of my mouth. It's a 3,927 houses, residents, family units. They want us to build over the next six years. That's a 1,275% increase over the last eight years themselves. We don't have the land. We don't have the locations. We don't have the street structure. We don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the police. We don't have what we need to support this type of community. It is not, it will not be the Cyprus of today if we have to do that. The only way to fight this is to work with Sacramento, speak to the Southern California Association of Governments, talk to the regional housing needs and figure out how to resolve this problem.
All right, David, thank you. Ann Hertz is next. And unmute. Yes, you need to unmute. Do you understand the question? You know where we are with the question. You still need to unmute.
I believe in local control. And I will fight for Cyprus against Sacramento. If they try to impose 4,000 new housing units on us, our current city council has already put the process in place where they are going to fight against this. But I think this is going to be a continuing issue for city councils to come. We have to work together to maintain our high-quality life here in Cyprus. And if you elect me, I will do that for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Francis Marquez is next.
Yes, I want to say we need to ensure that all new developments, we need a long-term plan. If any new developments fit the character of our community and address the needs of the region. We're currently experiencing a statewide housing crisis and too many families in our city and Orange County are finding it hard to keep up with the rising cost of living. You know, young kids that are raised here, go to college, come back, can't afford homes here. You know, and I think that luxury apartment complexes are not the answer. We need homes that first-time home buyers can access and that seniors can afford on a fixed income. Many seniors can't afford to leave a big home right now because it's just too expensive. I understand that retail is also essential too. It's a central component to generate sales tax revenue and fund our city. I question the merit of pursuing a mixed-use development at the, at a moment where well-known retail chains are filing for bankruptcy. And I continue to negotiate with Shay on their plans and adjust to the needs of our community. I'll demand a retail strategy so we can ensure it's not built with no anchor tenants lined up. I'll also ask for more community benefits to mitigate the increased use of our city's services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cole Thompson. Cole?
Hey, Tim. Well, some of you may remember, some of you may not, the old show Andy Griffiths, the Andy Griffiths Show with Gomer Pyle, he would say, "Well, surprise, surprise, surprise. Well, surprise, surprise, surprise that Sacramento politicians made this decision." Of course they did. But it doesn't fit our community. We have to find a balance. There's some areas where high-density makes sense, but for most of our city, it just doesn't make sense at all. This has to be local control. And I was on school site council for several years, so I know what local control means. I know how important it is. And we need to support that. This cannot just be Sacramento way up here dictating to us down here what they think is right. They need to provide the ability for cities to make some decisions themselves. This does, this just doesn't make any sense, but well, surprise.
And Rachel Strong is next.
Thank you. I agree with the panel that we're hearing, the remarks that we're hearing, that this isn't a great time to be building this kind of housing, high-density housing projects are a terrible idea for Cyprus. We have seen a traumatic transformation in the city from a rural area to a more suburban. And now we're moving in a more densely urban direction. I think it's the wrong way to go for a place that's managed to retain a small-town feel, even in the face of development and progress. So I think it will be important, if we are going to combat Sacramento, to be a really unified city council moving forward. This next term is going to be really critical for us to come together, strategize and create a solid development plan for how to push this through our city in terms of fighting Sacramento and pushing back against them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So Rachel was last. Our next question, let's see, yes. Our next question is going to start with Blaze Benz. Blaze, if you could join me. So the question is, who or what are the main sources of funding for your campaign? Will you be taking monies from political action committees such as the racetrack or other large businesses or political campaigns? Or from individuals or all of the above? In the past, some of the political action committees, the racetrack have had a history, the last eight election cycles of funding campaigns. So we're curious, the citizens want to know, where are you getting your funding? Because it costs money to run your city council. And so if all of you could share that, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim. Yes, I, I will not be taking a single penny from anyone. There's three reasons why I really feel strongly that we shouldn't be taking any funds or any support from any one person or organization. As soon as you do covertly or overtly, you owe and you will be indebted. And we've seen optically how that looks and it's not good. Two, in this year, we really don't need to take any funds from anybody. Because of the pandemic, I can't take $5,000 from somebody, spend it at the Cypress Festival for a booth and pass out flyers because there is no Cypress Festival this year. There won't be a car rally. There won't be a concert in the green. So we really are at a level playing field. We don't need to have monies from others. But the third reason, again, back to the optics, it's optically, you, you take, you take money from somebody. Not only do you owe, but if you do anything for that person or organization, it's going to look suspect in the upcoming years when bills or measures are passed. So I, I don't believe anybody should be taking any money and I have not and I will not be taking any money from any, any personal organization.
All right, thank you. Next is Kerry Hayashida, if you could join me. There we go.
Okay, so I'm running a grassroots campaign as well. And I'm not taking any big donations from organizations. I am funding the campaign myself and friends that have donated small donations as well as in-kind services, printing and things like that. I, I like the grassroots campaign. I've been walking and meeting businesses, business owners and residents. And it's just, it's been great. And so I really think that that's the way to go in a small-city campaign.
All right, Kerry, thank you very much. Next is Jimmy Fuller.
Yeah, I, you can actually see all of our campaign finance forms and disclosures on the city's website for the reporting period ending September 19th, I believe it was. And you'll notice on my form, I am accepting donations from individuals in Cyprus. I only have one that doesn't live in Cyprus. And the campaign is primarily funded by myself and my family. And again, like Tim said, unfortunately, it does take money to run for city council. We are, my team and I are knocking on doors. We are putting out door hangers, yard signs, Facebook. And so, but I am not taking any money from PACs, the racetrack committees, private developers or city contractors for that matter. It's all funded by individuals from our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just a reminder, don't, don't go away till I come back on. So, all right, David, thank you for joining me. And question about your funding?
No problem. Thank you so much. I too am self-funding, completely self-funding and doing it at a very low amount. My true belief is to be word of mouth, use social media as well as door knocking and participate in events like this. I don't want to be indebted with anyone at all, you know, or have any impressions or owe anything to anyone. Ironically, I was going to just reference exactly what Jimmy and I are right align. The 470 and 460 forums were posted on the Cyprus website and I do recommend you looking. And do look deeply at who is funding and what initiatives the candidates are supporting. I even had to say no to my mom because I don't want to go through the paperwork and, and feel indebted to my mother. So I'm excited to self-fund this and get the support immediately from myself. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that. Ann Hertz is next. And you're live. And you need to unmute. I'm sorry. Need to unmute.
I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're all ready to go.
Thank you. I'm very proud to say that I am primarily self-funded. I have invested $25,000 of my own money into this campaign because I care about Cyprus so much. And I believe so fervently that I am the right person to be on the city council during this, you know, challenging time as we move through the pandemic and beyond. I want to ensure that everybody in the community has a chance to hear my message, learn a little bit about who I am and vote for Ann Hertz. Fifth on the ballot, first for Cyprus.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Next is Francis Marquez.
Hi, I have accepted donations from friends, family, women's organizations and labor organizations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Cole Thompson is next. Thank you, Cole.
Yes, sir. I will be raising money mostly just from family and friends. And if anyone else wants to donate that's small donor, fine. But I'm not going to accept any PAC money, any organizations or companies. I echo Blaze that, you know, as soon as they, you know, get ahold of you, you know, you're, you're pretty much sold into them. You know, we all hear the horror stories of that, of course. So that, that's why I won't be accepting any of that money. And that's why I'm just going to keep us, you know, relatively small operation. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Cole. Next is Rachel Strong.
Thank you for this really important question. I work a lot with children and young adults. And one of my key messages to them is there is nobody out there that should believe in you more than yourself. I am running an entirely self-funded campaign. I am accepting small donations from friends and family that are limited to $100. And I will not be participating in taking any sort of endorsement or campaign funding from large corporations or corporate interests. I think that we need a grassroots person to represent the, the needs and wants of our voters and our constituents. And I really hope to be that person. I think that honesty and integrity in running a campaign are key and speak a lot to what kind of a candidate you'll be and what kind of a city council member you will perform as. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Next is Steve Moss.
Thank you, Tim. I want to simply echo the comments of Rachel. I mean, she couldn't have said it better than, than I could. I, I just, I want everybody to know that I am primarily self-funded. I will accept donations under $100 from other residents who want to participate in the process. But I will not accept PAC money. I generally believe that politics has been corrupted by large-money donations. I will not accept money from labor unions or any other kind of union or any other PAC. Integrity is so important to me. We have to be, we have to gain the confidence and trust of the citizens of Cyprus. They have to believe what we say. We have to mean what we say and be ready to honor all of our promises. As a result, you know, we do have to fund our campaigns. We have to get signs and banners and, and issue all kinds of literature, but, and that costs money. But I am primarily self-funded. Thank you.
All right. And let me just say, as a former city council member, it does cost money to run a campaign. And all the information is online at the city of Cyprus. And if you've heard a candidate that you think is worthwhile or contributing to as a citizen, that helps, you know, keep the outside money out and helps grassroots support from citizens on board. So I'm just going to put in a plug for that. The next question is going, we're going to start our answers with Kerry Hayashida. So Kerry, if you could join me. There's been a nationwide discussion on some communities, in some communities about defunding the police. So we would like you to please share your opinion about this concept in general and how you see it as it relates to the Cyprus Police Department. If, I wondered if anybody has done a ride-along yet with Cyprus Police Department. So question about defunding police and Kerry Hayashida, if you could join me.
Tim, this is the webcast admin. It appears Kerry is having some internet trouble.
Okay, we'll move next to Jimmy Fuller. We'll start with Jimmy Fuller. So Jimmy, the question is, defunding the police, there's been a push for that and what's your feeling about that?
Okay, well, I, I want to put it on record for all the residents of Cyprus that I am 100% against defunding the police. We enjoy a excellent police department in Cyprus that is engaged in community policing. I actually had an interview with the chief about a month ago to talk about this issue. And it turns out that in Cyprus, we have had no use of force or excessive use of force complaints in the last 10 years. And I think that really speaks volumes to what kind of department we're running. And I'm really proud of the fact that our officers are engaged in community policing. And, you know, especially during COVID, I think it's shown more than ever that they're involved. They do the drive-bys and the lights and sirens, you know, for the parades and the birthdays and anniversaries. And then we've got the, the little donut car that can do kids' events. And so, no, I am not for defunding the police whatsoever in Cyprus. And I believe that we need to maintain our high quality of life. Thank you.
So, thank you. So, thank you. If someone, we've lost Kerry, if someone could contact her uh, and try to make sure that she uh, tries the logging and again, that we'll just pick her up at the end. We'll move on to David Gersten. David, if you could answer that question.
Thank you so much. Um, I am incredibly passionate about our police. I absolutely will go on record that I am against any defunding of any police department. I actually wanna thank and congratulate Chief Cox for his retirement this week. Uh, there was a fantastic cer- uh, ceremony on Monday evening at the city council meeting. How does it relate to Cypress? I think, again, Jimmy took the words out of my mouth. Similar programs, amazing programs, homeless programs, drive-bys, vacation checks, the party, the handling of the pandemics. Um, the recent uh, march that we had at the, you know, on Catala earlier during the pandemic, during social injustice times. I do not think at all that we should defund the police. I actually was a police volunteer for both Cypress, uh, Gardena Police and Los Angeles Police Department and hope to participate again. And Tim, to answer your question on the drive-along, on the ride-alongs, because of the pandemic, they took that out of our opportunity this year as being candidates.
What a bummer. Yes. Thank you for answering that question. Uh, let's see, Anne Hertz is next. We're gonna cycle around. Kerry is back online, so we'll pick Kerry up at the end. And then we'll start the next question with Kerry. So we'll move on to Anne Hertz, keeping the order maintained. Uh, defunding the police is the question, Anne.
Thank you, Tim. I'm very honored to announce that I have been endorsed by the Cypress Police Office Association. I have a longstanding relationship with our police department and have created numerous programs together. Um, including uh, mentoring programs for kids. I work on the North Orange County Public Safety Task Force with them. Under no circumstances ever would I ever consider defunding the police. I think it's critical that we continue to fund them so we can recruit and retain the excellent officers that we have and maintain the wonderful quality of service that we have in the city of Cypress. Public safety is my number one priority. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Anne. Francis Marquez is next. Thank you.
Hey, Tim, I, I do not support defunding our police department. Um, it's been a strong department since I was a kid. Um, and so I absolutely fully support giving uh, resources to our police department. I wanna make sure that we work careful with our budget. Right now, our police department budget takes up forty, forty-eight percent of our city's budget. I believe the high percentage warrants evaluation and whether we can sustain this budget long-term. Community safety is important, absolutely. And the crime continues to drop in our city. However, we also need to get, engage in a dialogue around police responsibility and whether there are some instances where another agency may have a better approach, such as mental health crises and responding to calls about unhoused individuals. Recent peaceful protests, including um, Black Lives Matter. You know, those in Cypress had called for us to really declare that movement and evaluate the systemic racism, racism in our institutions, including policing. It's on us as leaders to ask questions about our police department's practices, training and evaluations. And I'll be a voice for this accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cole Thompson. There we go. Thank you.
Um, yeah, this is a note writer. No way are we gonna defund the police. I don't support that at all. That's just uh, ridiculous. Let's just call for what it is. Um, you know, as someone who's recently graduated high school, they would come down to our campus and uh, you know, eat lunch with us in the main quad, you know, and talk to us, ask us how it's going, you know, be very engaged with us. I sat on school site council, as I previously mentioned. And every year we have to approve the safety plan uh, for the campus. Um, they were always uh, able to answer questions by the administrators and they would have a safety night one year that they came by and talked to us about school safety and their partnerships in it. Uh, they're very professional. They handled the uh, Black Lives Matter protest uh, that occurred uh, down there by the El Torreto, uh, pretty, oh, well not pretty, very professionally. No violence reported and everyone went home safe and it was a good, safe event. So, you know, that's a hallmark and uh, to their professionalism and how really successful they are as a department. So I applaud them for their years of service dedication to this community and keeping us safe. I appreciate them very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Cole. Next is Rachel Strong. Rachel?
Thank you. I, like many of the other candidates, I'm one hundred percent against defunding the police. I think that we enjoy an incomparable level of safety and security as well as uh, just a, a wonderful sense of partnership with our local police. I want to credit our recently retired Chief of Police Rod Cox for helping build this amazing police culture. We were able to, as candidates, attend a orientation very recently where Mr. Cox addressed us and talked about some of the training that he has worked hard to put in place to build this culture. I think we as residents of Cypress should be extremely proud of it. In addition, I was impressed with the way the protests for Black Lives Matter were handled by our local PD. It was more a spirit of partnership and understanding than any sort of a confrontation. And I think all of us as residents should be proud of that. So totally against it, one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Steve Moss is next. Steve?
Yeah, thank you. Let me state again categorically that I am opposed to defunding the police. Um, I do not believe the uh, issues that, the societal issues that we face right now are a funding issue. Uh, obviously, we should always be looking at the, the budgets and what we're spending and it, could we do it better? And that applies to not just policing, but everything else as well. Uh, and it does not surprise me that the majority of the budget, uh, the city budget goes to policing. That is, after all, the primary responsibility of government is to keep us safe and secure. And uh, our police department in Cypress does an incredibly good job. Um, it is what ensures the quality of life that we have. It allows us to run our businesses. It allows us to walk safely, uh, even at night and to enjoy a really good quality of life here in Cypress. And so I am categorically opposed to defunding the police and I want to express my appreciation to the Cypress PD for all they do.
Thank you, Steve. Next is Blaze Benz.
Hi, Tim. I'll address your second question first. I have identity ride-alongs with the police department, uh, serving as a uh, uh, Sheriff, Orange County Sheriff's uh, Lieutenant. Um, I actually served with uh, Paulo Morales when he was in the police department, uh, before he was on the city council, uh, with the Muslims Against Drunk Driving meetings. And I served with a number of Cypress uh, police officers uh, at the jails when we were processing uh, suspects that we brought in from the field. Um, Cypress P, Police Force is one of the best, actually in the sixty-seven cities in uh, Orange County. I believe they're number, they're ranked number seven. Um, so there's clearly some uh, room for improvement, but we are in the top ten and we are a very good police force right now. So for defunding, no, I'm actually gonna take the stance like I did with uh, sales tax potentially. I think we can actually augment um, the uh, sales for, uh, the police force. And we are going to need to do that. Uh, it, as we talked about earlier, we're going to be growing the city with possibly two, three, maybe even four thousand units, hopefully not. Um, but as we grow residents, as well, and commercial businesses here, we're gonna need more police force. And we can do that in a fiscally responsible way, working with our sister cities and uh, other agencies um, to, to mean, to scale.
Thank you. Thank you, Blaze. Uh, Kerry Hayashida. You're back. I see. Great. We lost your signal there for a while.
Yes, I was panicked, but I'm here. Can you do me a favor and repeat the questions, please?
Yes. So there's been a nationwide discussion in some communities about defunding the police. Pretty simple that we'd like you to share your opinion about the concept in general, especially as you see that it relates to the Cypress Police Department or, you know, do you have other ideas or that kind of thing?
Okay, thank you. Um, so no, I am not in favor of defunding the police. Um, I am thankful for the department that we have, the funding that the city um, has in the budget for the police department and believe that um, we have great programs and there are great educational, the Cypress Police have a great community relationship. And I think that um, that will continue. And I'm, I'm proud to be a part of a community that has such a great tie, whether it's the social media, uh, whether it's the education programs. Um, and, and just the, even the ability to um, have the police come by when you're on vacation kind of thing. I like that. And I believe, like as Blaze mentioned, I think that moving forward as we grow um, with more housing, we will need to find um, more funding. And hopefully, we can do that with partnerships um, um, with our other local cities and, including uh, social workers and things. Because the police today have to address so many more issues than they have in the past. And we wanna make sure that we support them in their needs and hopefully, programs like that will be um, something that we can um, establish as well as I'd like to encourage uh, neighborhood watch programs.
Okay, time, time is up. Kerry, don't log off. Uh, we're, we're going to start the next question with you since you missed your opportunity to go first. So while we've got you on, uh, we're gonna go to the next question. So stand by. The question is, the, the Chamber of Commerce is generally pro-business growth and the pandemic is gonna shift how major corporations look at their office space needs. So uh, do you have any ideas about how you'd like to see the city be involved in encouraging new business growth as we move forward and as we come out of this uh, the pandemic growth, you know, the pandemic recession? And uh, that's both in our commercial corridor as well as uh, new retail businesses. I know, a number of you have mentioned the Lincoln Corridor and so on and so forth. So we need to kind of get back into focusing on a growth period in a time when we know some people are gonna be pulling back. So uh, what are, what are your ideas for encouraging business growth here in Cypress?
Um, definitely wanna look at the partnerships that we can establish. Uh, we've lost Bondi, we've lost Mitsubishi, we've lost BANDS. So we really have an opportunity to bring big business here. We, the city offers so many things. And I think um, creating a program, a strategic development program that would share that with businesses uh, would be huge. Um, I also think that because of the pandemic, we really do need to stop and take a minute to look at how it's going to shift in the future. And by doing that, that would um, I'm talking about um, the development projects, the thirteen acres, the nine acres, the um, potential uh, business at the Los Alamitos Racetrack. We really do, we should hold off on making any big decisions right now until we kind of see how things are going to move forward. And um, the Lincoln Corridor, it'd be great to reimagine that as a, a walking street. I mean, people still wanna go out and support the community. Retail with uh, drink shops and, you know, like subs and grubs and such like that. So I think that would be the, the plan. Thanks.
Uh, next is Jimmy Fuller. So Jimmy, you got the question?
Yep. Uh, so I, I kind of talked about this a little bit earlier uh, in one of my previous answers. But I really think that our city council should be more involved when it comes to economic development in Cypress. Something I've seen on some cities in the East Coast when I was a former construction manager is that if we had an economic task force or ad hoc subcommittee, so to speak, where our city council members, one or two only probably, uh, could have a lunch with those landlords, uh, existing business owners, small and large, to find out what we can do to bring them to Cypress and what we can do to retain them and then expand in Cypress. Um, I'm glad to see that the city is finally transitioning to an online permitting system. That really helps businesses out. I can't tell you how frustrating it is to work with a city that doesn't uh, do anything online or, you know, continues, continues to use paper. Um, then I really think that we need to work on expanding our, the city's partnership with the uh, Chamber of Commerce, your organization, Tim. You know, I volunteered with you guys for a couple of years now and the partnerships that your group offers, especially smaller business in Cypress, is invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Next is David Gersten.
Thank you very much for this question. Um, very interestingly, I think we definitely need to be strategic with partnering with businesses and especially our residents. I also do agree that no big decision should be made around Shake Land, the Amazon Last Mile or other decisions with the current council in place. I love the current council, but I also think they're gonna make some decisions that the candidates are going to have to deal with their decisions. So I would ask for them to postpone those decisions so that we can speak to our residents and really find out what they need, what they want, how it affects everyone. I do also think that after the pandemic, pandemic ends, whenever that is, technology will still be around. And I also do believe that people will come back to the offices. I do think there might be different experiences in those offices, rotating schedules that may change traffic patterns, might change the space use. But I do believe that it isn't a huge concern, but we do need to attract, retain smart businesses to our city.
All right, next is Anne Hertz. And you got the question?
I do. Thank you, Tim. I've been around a long time and I remember attending monthly meetings at the community center for exactly this purpose. Um, the city had three organizations, one called Brace, the other called Agent, and the other called Spirit. Each one had a different focus group. Brace was for the twenty-five largest um, sales tax generators in the um, city. Spirit was more for single um, that's sing, it's single owner uh, small businesses. And I think we should start that again. I think now that the council has hired a uh, community development director, we could implement that and really get everybody together to dialogue and find out what the businesses need and how we can support them more. Um, we need to really focus on continuing to be a business-friendly city. And part of that means getting to know our businesses and talking with them about how we can uh, continue to keep them in our city and generating revenue so that we can maintain our high quality of life. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Anne. Next is Francis Marquez. And you need to unmute. Sorry, sorry. Do you need, you got the question? Here we go.
We need to encourage entrepreneurship and support small business development. You know, um, I'll use my experience with working in the federal government to bring small business opportunities or resources to our city. Also seek public-private partnerships to help increase the capital available to women and minority-owned businesses and help them open in Cypress. I also wanna say that we really need to speak to our residents and reach out to residents and have communication with residents about businesses coming into a community. I live off of Valley View in Orangewood in Co- in College Park. And with the Amazon proposal was before the council and no one in our neighborhood over here knew about the proposal, nothing. And um, people jumped on the, the call two weeks ago. And we were very surprised to hear the different things they were recommending having, you know, at ten o'clock, have, having sixty to eighty vans shoot out every twenty minutes down Catala Avenue. You know, I, this area is right behind my house, the Mitsubishi property. I really don't think it's a good resource, um, and the property being used well. And it's bad, the air quality is bad. And we're concerned over here about Holder Avenue being opened up. So I, I really wish that there's a relationship with the council and community and that there's outreach to the community to ask community members what we want. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, next is Cole Thompson. It's been a while. You got the question?
Yes, sir, I do. All right. Thank you, sir. Um, I think one of the things that we can do to example, or exemplify growth uh, the businesses coming into our community is the fact that we have a very aged uh, populace. I mean, you go to El Zerape at uh, you know, five o'clock on a Friday, there's a line all the way around the uh, the shopping center. Uh, you know, same thing with all the other restaurants and other businesses in, in the city of Cypress. They're, they're very, very popular with our uh, you know, with our citizens. So we can highlight that we have an engaged community. And that's gonna be very important. And also I, uh, building a partnership with Cypress College about talent retention and saying, look, here's a pathway right from college into a business career or something like that. That would be very important. Partnership with AIM, which is a program within AOHSD. It's the Anaheim Innovative Mentorship Experience. We have a lot of tremendous businesses in Cypress. I think partnering them with AIM to get our clients involved would be terrific, not only for their benefit of gaining work experience and self-esteem, but also for the businesses to know, hey, you know, our community's engaged. And building a pool of investors so that way they, that startups and other small businesses know, know that they have financial support within the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, next is Rachel Strong.
Thank you. I think we have quite a few opportunities. Uh, in the current climate, we find ourselves, the landscape with COVID nineteen, there is there is a real reduced need for corporate office building space. I think we need to get a little bit more progressive and start looking at some different ideas to let businesses move into some of our larger office buildings in conjunction with one another, create more partnerships and networking. For example, the WeWork model, which is extremely popular in grouping small businesses together and utilizing larger corporate spaces as an economy of scale. I think that's something that we as a city could facilitate. And I agree with some of the candidates here in saying that a task force to investigate why some of the businesses are leaving Cypress and what we can do to entice them to stay is a fantastic idea. Thank you.
You caught me by surprise. Okay, Steve Moss is next.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. You know, um, first and foremost, I want to reiterate that, uh, it's important for the citizens to do more than vote. They're going to have to make clear to the city council the character and nature of the community they want to live in. It's not just about attracting businesses. What do businesses want more than anything? Customers, right? And if you, if you're ticking off all the residents before the, the businesses even move in, you're not going to have a very good relationship with your customers. So there needs to be a balance. And what I find lacking a little bit is a good, long-term strategy by the city. We, uh, have heard a lot of good ideas for possibilities that we could implement in the city. And this is what the city council should take up and develop a long-term strategy and execute that strategy. What businesses crave is stability. They want to make a profit and they need to be assured that the environment is going to be there where they can thrive and survive. So, uh, if I'm privileged to be elected, I sincerely hope that we can get a, a committee together that can create a long-term plan for the city.
All right, our last answer for this question is Blaze Benz. Blaze?
Uh, thanks, Tim. Uh, I agree with what many of the candidates said. Uh, really, the, the key that we're getting is we need a plan. Um, and we need to be, as Rachel said, we need to be a bit more progressive. Um, if you look at, if you talk to some of the business leaders in the community or business advocates, you're talking about like Cushman Wakefield that are trying to lease the Vans building. And they said that Cypress is known for being a very, uh, difficult, uh, city to do business in. Uh, we've got to change that. We need to ask them why and what businesses need. There are a number of things that we could have done during this COVID time, but there's a number of things we can do to in, increase, uh, the desire for businesses to come here. And I think we also need to have a, a committee, as, as we have said, um, to look at what types of businesses we want to bring in, um, for the future. When you look at Mitsubishi, Yamaha, Vans, and so on, these are all large headquartered facilities that are no longer being utilized as they, as they have been in the past. What we could look at is, uh, more progressive, uh, you know, businesses that are coming in in the future that will stay here for thirty years. We know service is not going to go away. So your, your service shops, but also maybe pharma, healthcare, those types of things. If you look at the cities that are successful, they have vertical markets that are strong for now and for the next thirty years.
Okay. All right, thank you, Blaze. So that comes to the end of the question portion of our candidate forum. And we want to thank all the candidates for their responses and participation tonight. We're going to wrap up the program. Uh, each candidate gets a two-minute closing statement. And we're going to hear from each of the candidates in the reverse order from which they started in the beginning. So our first closing statement this evening is going to be from Francis Marquez. Francis?
Thank you, Tim. I want to thank Tim, Vanessa, and I want to thank Tim, Vanessa, and the entire Cypress Chamber of Commerce team who worked hard on our behalf to hold this important forum. I'm grateful for your work, thank you. I'm a daughter of Cypress. I am where I am today because our community raised me. I'm asking for your vote to be able to use my education and skills to help all community members. I've worked tirelessly as a legislative director for Congressman Ellen Lowenfall, advocating on behalf of the community for better access to healthcare and childcare for our veterans. I also helped secure funding for two programs that serve our youth in Cypress. The Starbase Program, which allows fifth-grade kids to go to the base for one week of free science training from the military perspective. And also the National Guard Youth Challenge Program, which helps young people finish their high school diploma. I worked very hard with the House Appropriations Committee to get twenty-five million dollars two years in a row for both programs. Also, uh, one of the things I wanted to say is that both programs have benefited youth in Cypress. Last time when I knocked on doors in twenty eighteen, it was really awesome to see all the young kids who had participated in the Starbase Program and the National Guard Youth Challenge Program. You know, Cypress with its safe neighborhoods and strong schools provided me with a foundation for a successful life, and I'm grateful. All kids deserve that chance. As your city council member, I will tirelessly advocate for our residents, for your views to be a part of the process. I will work hard to bring city and community leaders together to do what is best for our residents. This is what I've done my entire life while working in government. I will focus on improving neighborhood safety and bringing accountability to City Hall. I want to ensure that our youth have every opportunity, like I did, to build a foundation for a successful life and that our seniors and working families are protected and enjoy the quality of life that they are working for and that they've earned. I ask for your vote and I'm ready to use my experience to work for you. Thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you, Francis. Appreciate that. Thank you for joining us tonight. Our, uh, next closing statement is from Ann Hertz.
Thank you. I am a proven local leader with a long history of finding solutions to local challenges. I'm very honored to be endorsed by both the Cypress Police Officers Association and the Orange County Fire Authority. With my broad range of skills and local experience, I can immediately get to work for you to address the complex challenges that we know about and those that we have yet to face. I am very knowledgeable about local issues and will use my experience to help us navigate the challenges of COVID and continue to thrive as a community. Together, we will maintain public safety, retain and attract new businesses to generate revenue and maintain the high quality of life. I have a heart for our residents. You've seen that, you've seen me in the community. Fifteen years in PTA, on the Parks and Rec Commission, fifteen years in Rotary, five years with the Orange County Children's Language Center, and a six-year volunteer with National Charity League. Those were all volunteer services, plus the time I've done with Precious Life and We Care just because I love them and I think they do amazing work. And then, of course, you know me for fifteen years as the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club here in our town. I have the combination of the passion and heart for our community and I have the knowledge, skills, and ability that it's going to take to move us through, um, the challenges ahead and maximize the opportunities and maximize the opportunities that are going to come our way. I'm asking for your vote. I'm Ann Hertz, fifth on the ballot and number one for Cypress. I hope to earn your vote, thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Appreciate your participation tonight. Next is, next is David Kirsten for his closing statement.
All right, thank you. Sorry about that, pressed the wrong button. But, Tim, thank you so much, Chamber of Commerce. And SoCal Edison, thank you for tonight's event. I also want to thank over a hundred of our fantastic residents that have been on the Facebook Live ever since it started. Next time, let's get thousands of people to participate. I'm so glad we have the opportunity to share our thoughts and answer questions from our citizens along such amazing other candidates for this year's election. Remember, I'm the person running for city council that for a living is deeply involved with business transformation. Using the skills, I know that I can help transform the city and I look forward to doing so. As previously mentioned, I am deeply involved in community, both professionally and non-professionally. Whether it is volunteering for my professional organizations, my son's sports teams, getting involved with park and recreation decisions, or volunteering for other local police departments at one point. Community is what drives me every day. Listening to the residents, our business owners, and even our visitors that come to our city is a core focus for me. Making decisions that align with our mission and our vision and not to provide the rewards to those personally best in our city will be a core focus for me. As a reminder, my core initiatives are citizen safety and security, youth and adolescent programs, city beautification initiatives, enhancing community pride, business recruitment and retention, and mental illness awareness. In closing, the conversation does not have to stop now. I look forward to the next few weeks before this election, interacting with our citizens, our residents, and our business owners. I look forward to the conversations this weekend and our in-person event on Saturday. I look forward to reading all the comments that were posted in tonight's Facebook Live and addressing them personally if I can. Please reach out to me and email me at david@davidforcyprus.com. That's for F O R, not the number four. But david@davidforcyprus.com. Have a great evening, good luck to the rest of the candidates, and thank you again for everyone's participation.
Thank you, David, for participating. Uh, next is Jimmy Fuller for his closing statement. Jimmy?
Thank you, uh, Tim, Vanessa, and the entire Chamber of Commerce Board for putting this on tonight. It was my pleasure to answer all of our community and businesses' questions. As demonstrated tonight, I am the most well-rounded candidate for the Cypress City Council. I've been in, involved, I've been involved in numerous events and organizations over the past decade, all of that done with a passion to make Cypress a better place to live, work, and play. My goal is to bring a voice to residents who might feel left out of local decisions, to work with businesses, both, both new and existing, to grow and expand in Cypress, to enhance our parks and recreation offerings, and most importantly, to keep Cypress the safest city possible and ensuring our high quality of life continues. With your vote, we can sustain Cypress for years to come for the betterment of our entire community. If you'd like to talk further, please feel free to reach out to me via my Facebook. It's at Jimmy Fuller for Cypress or via my website, jimmyf o r, uh, jimmyforcyprus with an F O R dot com. Uh, you'll notice on my Facebook, I'm posting weekly videos explaining my stance on issues surrounding our community. And as the campaign, uh, campaign season continues on, I look forward to meeting you in your neighborhood. So, you know, socially distant COVID procedures and all, and working with our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy, for participating tonight. Uh, next for closing statements is Carrie Katsumata Hayashida. That's the name that's on her ballot, so we want to get that correct. There we go.
Thank you.
Carrie, thank you.
Well, thank you, Tim, and the chamber, and also our sponsors. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and am so honored to hear, uh, from the other candidates. We all did a great job and should be proud of ourselves for attending tonight. Um, I am here today because I care about Cypress. Um, I've been a resident for twenty-five years and I have lived a full life in that twenty-five years. I look forward to my boys, who are now off to college, coming back and raising their families in this great city. Uh, with the twenty-twenty pandemic, we have huge, um, I think obstacles in front of us. And yet, our spirit, our community spirit, it has been shown throughout with going out and supporting our local businesses and with also just helping our neighbors in need. Uh, we have multi, multi-generational families here and I look forward to, um, being a city council member and helping to make sure that we preserve the quality of life in Cypress for the next generation. Um, I also am for sustainable growth and management as well as building community support post-COVID. Um, I appreciate, um, the opportunity to speak tonight and I, um, respectfully ask for your vote on November third. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie, for participating tonight. We appreciate that. Uh, next up is Blaze Benz. Blaze, thank you for your closing statement.
Tim, thank you. Um, I'd like to thank you, Tim, and the chamber, the board, for putting on a great event. Um, I'd also like to thank all the candidates. I'm humbly, uh, I feel very humbled by seeing some great candidates that we have for the city of Cypress and the enthusiasm that we all have for and passion for, uh, building Cypress and improving it as it is. With that, I do feel that I am, uh, the best candidate for, uh, Cypress. I have, uh, business acumen where I've, I'm, I'm a small business owner. I've built many small businesses, uh, within Cypress and within Orange County, um, as well as managed, uh, uh, high levels, uh, with Fortune 500 companies. Always have exponentially grown, uh, the businesses that I've been involved with. I believe I can do similar for, for Cypress. I teach at UCI, uh, as an undergraduate professor, business, uh, and leadership, uh, courses. And I think we, we have a great ability here to improve on our, uh, on our city. Um, I think I bring a lot of, uh, my volunteer efforts, whether it's with the Orange County Sheriff's Department and understanding law and order um, and what we need to do to even better our police department, as well as, uh, volunteer efforts where I'm on the board of, of Tanglewood. And for three hundred and one units, um, for the last, uh, fifteen years I've been on the board, um, we've been able to have the lowest, uh, association fees and the best amenities, brand-new roofs, brand-new paint, and everything else. You know, we can do similar for the twenty-five thousand residents in, in Cypress. Or we can build, uh, bring in better services, um, improved services with being fiscal responsible and actually, uh, with economies of scale, really doing a, a great effort with our taxpayer dollars and making sure that we can lower those, uh, taxpayer dollar increments as opposed to, uh, increase. So with that, um, I'd like to steal the line from Ann. Um, I'm first on the ballot because I filed first, I believe, and, uh, I'm first for Cypress and I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Blaze, appreciate that. Um, it's interesting, ballot order is actually determined by, uh, drawing the alphabetic names in the state of, uh, in the city of Sacramento. In the governor's office, they draw alphabetical. So that's how you got the order that's on the ballot. Uh, Steve Moss is joining us for his closing statement. Steve, thank you.
I guess I should have started my name with an A. I, uh, want to thank everybody for their participation in this forum tonight, of course, and those who have organized it, the, the chamber, of course, uh, and, and, uh, sponsors and everybody who's worked hard to get us an opportunity to get before the voters and explain our positions. You guys are awesome public servants and we need more like you, of course. Um, an informed citizen is a united citizenry. There's no doubt about that and we are all in this together. And I hope that I have demonstrated, uh, tonight that I am qualified to represent the citizens of Cypress on the city council through community involvement and business experience. I am a long-term planner and I am passionate about community service. I love this city and want to pass on a high quality of life to residents in the future. There's lots to do in order to make that happen and I look forward to being able to work with you on that. Cypress has helped me raise three of the most wonderful human beings on the planet who are also involved in community service and I am eternally grateful for that. It makes me, uh, committed to ensuring opportunities, similar opportunities for all citizens and businesses in Cypress. I hope you'll join with me to support law and order, integrity, fiscal responsibility, and transparency. And of course, I asked for your vote on November third. But a thriving democracy requires more than just voting. It requires participation. And I ask that each of you join me to lift Cypress even higher. And I encourage you to check out my website, steveforcyprus.org and, and also the, the Facebook page for my campaign, Steve for Cypress. Uh, and it's an automatic join, so please join the group and get involved and be informed about what's going on. And if you have any questions or concerns at all, please email me at stevenumber4cyprus@gmail.com. steveforcyprus@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you for participating tonight. Uh, next candidate for closing statements is Rachel Strong. You going to invite Rachel on?
Yes.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. Thank you so much for giving all of the candidates an opportunity to use this forum to speak and introduce ourselves to the constituents of Cypress. I want to extend my gratitude to the chamber for putting on this event, for Tim and Derek for keeping us on target, and for, of course, SoCal Gas for sponsoring and making sure that this event took place. Um, I'm absolutely thrilled to be joined by such a diverse field with such fantastic ideas in terms of the number of candidates we are putting forth for the city council election. We have a really critical opportunity right now in the, in this moment in our city's history to make some changes and some choices that will affect the city for a good five, ten years and beyond. We have important things to decide with respect to redevelopment, support for small businesses, getting our constituents through the COVID crisis, so many more things that I think that this is a critical election for all of us. I would be absolutely honored to be selected for city council. I have been compelled to step forward and serve my community with leadership. I have behind me a very vintage sign of me running for student body president in the sixth grade. Apparently, I thought the slogan was good then and I still think it's good now. I'm really interested in seeing some strong leadership in the city of Cypress. I hope you will vote for Rachel Strong to that end. And I'm also going to be hosting a few Zoom meetings with constituents for the remainder of the campaign. If you'd like to get more information about me, I encourage you to join us or visit my website, which is strongcitycouncil.com. Take this time to see two new city council representatives. Take this time to see two new city council representatives, two who could be community-minded, ethical, progressive, and transparent. I think that's what the city of Cypress is calling for, what the city of Cypress needs, and what I would absolutely love to provide. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rachel. Appreciate you participating. And our last closing statement is the person who started first tonight, and that's Cole Thompson. Cole?
Thank you, Tim, and thank you for being the moderator tonight. We greatly appreciate it. You did a wonderful job and of course, thank you to the chamber and to all of you participating and to my fellow candidates, best of luck to you and thank you for being here. I really hope to work hard for our community and work hard for all of you. This city has given me a wonderful place to live and a terrific education. And I want to ensure that future generations will have the same opportunities that I've had, that Cypress will be a good and safe place to live, work, and go to school for everybody. I believe we can accomplish these goals and do much more when we do it together. And I hope to have the opportunity to work with all of you in the future for what is best for our city. So thank you all very much. It was an honor to be here and I will work to earn your vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Cole. Appreciate it. Thank you for participating. So that's it. Thank you once again to the candidates for your participation. Great job, everyone. Good luck to you. A reminder to the viewers, if you just tuned in a little bit late, that part two of this Chamber of Commerce-sponsored event is going to be a live meet and greet on Saturday, October 3rd, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in a strategically safe environment where we're going to have tables spread out at Oaknoll Park, 5700 Orange Avenue. And it'll be a socially-distanced setting. We'll keep, maintain social distance. We'll ask you to wear your masks and you'll get a chance to meet the candidates face-to-face, pick up any literature or yard signs, that kind of thing, and then move through from table to table to meet the candidates. So something different this year. And of course, we're all struggling through this whole COVID process from a business standpoint and Chamber of Commerce standpoint and from a candidate running a city council of race standpoint. So it's a challenge and I think we're overcoming it as much as we can. One more shout-out to our sponsor, SoCal Gas, who helped make this possible. And another shout-out to a company called Abercadaabra Events. They're the folks that did our technical coordination of this event through the GoToMeeting and Facebook Live for us. So, and I think they made it look really good and I appreciate all of their help. The Cypress Chamber of Commerce appreciates everyone out there watching for taking the time to learn about your local candidates. Our local city council plays an important role in the future of the city of Cypress. And your vote on the local level is actually tremendously important. We've seen city council races won or lost by just a handful of votes in the many years throughout Southern California. So get out and vote, be informed about every seat that you vote for because you can make a difference. So thank you very much for being here and thanks to everybody for watching. Good night from the Cypress Chamber of Commerce and city council candidates 2020.